I would now call to November 4th, 2013, Blue Springs City Council Meeting in Order. If you would stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's City Council meeting. The next item is a consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, accept a motion for approval. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Corbell.
Aye.
Councilman Lavesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Carrie unanimously.
Next we have a public hearing on the vacation of Lake Ridge Village Lot 7 PUD final plat.
Your Honor, for this public hearing, VAC 10-13-4131, I'd like to introduce one exhibit, which includes City Council information form with attachments, staff report with attachment, location map, map of proposed area of the vacation, affidavit publication as advertised in Examiner, October 12, 2013, vacation application with applicant's exclamation of the request, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses, the property owners within 185 feet of site, and copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay, Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Again, before this evening is a request to vacate the PUD final plan for Lot 7 of what has been known as Lake Ridge Village PUD. If we can show this clearly on the screen here. The applicant is requesting to vacate this PUD final plan order proposed and gain approval for a new mixed-use development plan that does not follow the existing Lake Ridge Village PUD. The Lake Ridge Village Lot 7 is located along northeast Duncan at the intersection of Adams Dairy Parkway and Duncan Road. Show the map here real quick. You can see there, it is just one piece of the overall Lake Ridge Village project. This was approved back in 2007. Go into the history here. Back in 2007 and 2008, the Lake Ridge Village project was approved, and again, the PUD file plan was approved by the planning commission just about five years ago to the date, in 2008, essentially to lock in the PUD concept plan as originally conceived for that Lake Ridge Village project. The lot itself is not that large. It is only just over two acres in size. The underlying zoning there is general business with the restricted overlay for Lake Ridge Village project. And the planning commission did review this request last week and have recommended an approval of the vacation on a vote of 10 to 0. So I'll stand for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes. The two acres, that was, I guess, that triggered the actual zoning. Is that right? Had they not done it by a certain timeline, this two acres here, then that whole area, the zoning would not have gone into effect.
Councilman Fowler, I'll defer to our city attorney as well, but the zoning would still be in effect because the zoning just doesn't automatically revert. The PUD concept plan, though, you're correct, would be, essentially, would have expired. So the overall concept plan would have expired, and that's what the applicant is looking to do here, is essentially take that off the books by vacating this PUD.
But I thought if a concept plan wasn't followed up on, you know, that is, it's linked to the zoning. Zoning contingent upon the concept plan.
As I recall, and I may not be sure, but I think what you're talking about is the zoning incorporates the PUD concept plan into it, so that if the PUD concept plan went away, the zoning would be up in the air, too.
Correct. Exactly in that the, as the applicant moves forward in the process of providing a new PUD, you're correct in that they would still have to rezone, but it's still an active work that they need to undertake. So it doesn't just automatically revert, they do have to come back and rezone it. Correct.
So by vacating this, you don't have to vacate the whole 100 acres, that concept plan as well?
Sorry. Essentially, the PUD final plan locked in that PUD concept plan by vacating that PUD final plan, therefore, essentially, kind of backs that off, backs that off, and therefore renders the concept plan also, I guess, inert, for lack of a better term.
Okay. And so, we will hear zoning again?
Very good point. Yes, as Mr. McDonald was referencing, they will have to rezone it because you're right, the zoning essentially matches the, as it stands now, current PUD concept plan. So as they vacate that, the zoning is still in place, but they will have to rezone that property in order to match their new plan. Correct.
Also, the current plan, the current concept plan, 450,000 square feet of retail. Is that correct?
I believe so. 420,000.
420,000 square feet of retail.
Yes. They call it town center uses, which, again, is a majority, that would be retail.
Right. And that, to me, was the trade-off versus putting residential homes next to the city-maintained lake. And, you know, that bar was pretty high. 420,000 square feet of retail is quite a bit. What is, before we vacate this, what are we going to? How many square feet of retail are we talking now?
That I'm not entirely sure. I guess I'll defer to the applicant if they have some more specifics on that. They presented at the planning commission last week, very generalized concept at this point. Obviously, as they move forward with a new PUD concept plan, they'll have a better handle on what those numbers may be, but they may be able to answer that better than I could.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Allen? From anyone? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present, would like to come forward? Be sworn in.
Jerome Murphy, 4700 Bellevue, Suite 210, Kansas City, 64112.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Members of the council. My name is Jerry Murphy, and I have asked that you approve the recommendation for the vacation of the zoning overlay. And I have a little, if you want to get some idea about where we're thinking about going, we're at a very preliminary stage. We're just trying to get this other PUD concept vacated, so we can go with something that's a little more market-driven. We're not entirely sure where we're going, we're just at the concept stage. But let me show you a couple of drawings that are, that are, plan or dead, and see if you have questions. I'll get to your question, Councilman Fowler, which is, are we interested in doing that much retail? And the answer is no. No way. I don't think the site will support it. Well, forgive me, this is not my computer, and I'm not too dexter with it.
And some staff, member, in your system?
There we go. This is our development team, South Brook Development Company. I, my son Brendan Murphy, is here tonight. We're using Engineering Solutions, Matt Schlick and Robert Walchrist. We've just engaged Tran Systems, a guy by the name of Tom Rohr, who's well-known to the city. And our landscaper is DHM Design. This is the site, as Mr. Holly just pointed out to you. Pluses. And this is, this is just a Google area photo of the site, and you can see there, the brown areas is where they're just growing hay right now. And we think that that sort of speaks to how the site wants to be developed, so that these more forested areas in the middle would not be built out, they'd be preserved. And we think it's a terrific opportunity to incorporate the trail system that the city's already put in place around Lake Remembrance. I'll show you one of the things that, so it sort of would lay out something like this. We're thinking, the commercial up there in the northwest corner, there's some mixed use here in sort of this middle pod, maybe some retail there along Adams Dairy, and more residential in. Up in the upper right-hand corner, that would be medium density, and right now, we haven't made up our mind at all on any of this stuff, but just preliminarily, we're thinking, you know, townhouses, or maybe detached homes with smaller lots. Down here on the very tip, one of the ideas we thought we'd take into account, we picked up from Mayor Ross, you can see the acreage, right on the tip of the property is actually owned by the city. We thought maybe we'd enlarge it a little bit and use it for a public-private partnership. We're not sure yet what use that would be, you know. And we're looking for ideas from you all, and from the planning staff. The mayor's idea is a pretty good one, you know, maybe, maybe a park or something dedicated to service providers, or, I don't know, maybe a pavilion of some kind. We'd like to incorporate the trail system. You can see the trails up through that one draw that's heavily forested. We have trails through almost all of those pieces that hopefully will link to your trail, so that we can exploit your trail and have your trail sort of exploit this inner trail And we could work with the city, too, on this little area. We've got this open space there in the future, so open space there between the south, left portion of the middle. This little area here, something could be done with that, and it would fit nicely with the, with the trail system that you already have in there, so. Anyway, that's, that's it. That's our, preliminarily, what we're talking about doing. We haven't put anything in stone. We hope to be back before you again, back before the planning commission again, with a proposed preliminary development plan. And that's about it. I'd like to thank you for your input, as the mayor, and Mr. Johnson, of course, the two councilmen from District 1 have been enormously helpful and dedicated, and given us a lot of their time. Planning staff has been wonderful, Mr. Holly, Scott Allen, Karen Gowdy, everybody's been just terrific, so we thank you for your time, and ask that you kind of get us past this first step, so we can move on with some new plans.
Are there any questions, Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. The estimate of how many square feet of commercial retail?
We just haven't, and I hate to make a representation to you and have it turn out not to be right, but we just don't think that site is really going to support a lot of retail or a lot of commercial. And the reason is because there's just so much development south of I-70. You've got all that commercial stuff there, and that tends to draw more commercial.
Okay. Any estimate on the number of residences?
No, I think, maybe I brought the wrong guy, maybe I should have brought the land planner with me tonight, but I couldn't estimate the number of residences. But we want to do, we want to do medium density up there, we want to do a lot of for-sale product, and we want a couple of apartment sites.
Any other questions from council?
You know, one of the things I stressed is, along that lake, I would like to have some nice sit-down restaurants. Now, that's one of the things we're liking in Blue Springs, is sit-down restaurants. And that would make a beautiful site to be, to come and have dinner overlooking a beautiful lake. And still have some more ideas about that point as well, that we could possibly look at. So, you know, right now, this thing is evolving, so certainly, if you have ideas, we want to get that to them, because we want that to be a destination like none other in eastern Jackson County. Councilman Corbell.
Your Honor, I just wanted to expand just a little bit on something he said about myself and Councilman Carter, that we did have a number of meetings with them prior to this, prior to this over the last few months, and it's been, it's been good information and substantially the same as what we've seen here.
And I just want to say how much I respect you and Councilman Carter for the time that you both put in. I mean, you've driven to destinations to meet us and talk with us, and then we bring a guy up from Dallas, and you go meet again, so you can talk to him, get his ideas, and vice versa. Then we bring another man from Denver, and you guys very graciously, I mean, they don't pay enough, that's all I can say. I have a great respect for both of you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, councilman?
I'll throw in there as well, other than the fact that your office on the plaz is difficult to find, which we actually did find. Talk about the gentleman from Dallas that we met, and the project that he did in Dallas, and how that might relate to this project.
Yes, the partner in Dallas is Nick Di Giuseppe, and he did a project called Valley Ranch. He's done thousands of units. Valley Ranch would be like a small city, has a population of about 30,000 people. It's right in the heart of Dallas, and in fact, it's the home of the Dallas Cowboys. They are actually within their development there. And they've done thousands of units, and you can check them out on the internet, and they're just beautiful. And he's done, that was really a signal project, but he's done a number of them after that, and they've all been high-quality projects.
I just want to congratulate you on the team that you've assembled. I like what I've seen so far in concept, and am willing to go to the next step to see what you bring to the plate.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Carter.
You know, and the last thing I would add is, one of the things, and you can attest to this, that we've, that we've emphasized, is whatever we do, it has to be quality. Yes.
Yeah, and then that's one thing that Mr. Di Giuseppe said, look, he says, I don't want to be associated with it if it looks like a bunch of army barracks or something. He said, I don't want a piece of quality. And of course, he said, just take a look at my old stuff, if you have any questions. And all the stuff that he's built is all quality, it's all got masonry exteriors, and they're really well-thought-out, well-planned.
Any other comments, questions? If not, thank you for your, Councilman Fowler?
For staff, yeah. I have questions for staff.
Oh, for staff, okay. All right, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Fowler, would you go ahead, and you want to go ahead and ask staff?
Yeah, I believe on the current concept plan that's in effect, there was a, another protection for the taxpayers out there, and that was that the residential would not be started until a significant portion of the retail was actually built.
Any...
That's the way I recall it, and what will happen to that condition? I mean, a lot of times, we get things built, and we, I'll give you the example of the Molofal Creek. You know, there was a whole lot of multifamily that went in behind that, and it certainly would have not been there without the promise of a shopping area equivalent to the Lee Wood stores out there, that we know. I don't remember the name of the Lee Wood shops, but they're pretty impressive, and that was kind of the, but we never got that delivered, but we certainly got the residential, high-density residential, and so that trade-off wasn't met, and I do recall a condition in this, so.
It'll go away. They're starting from scratch, so you can put whatever kind of requirements on it, on the new program that you want, but everyone goes away.
Okay.
And just to follow up, Councilman Fowler, in a couple of conversations and meetings with Mr. Murphy and his team, they have also reached out to us, and they're interested in exploring what types of tools might be available to them with regard to the use of incentives. They haven't proposed anything. Again, as Mr. Murphy indicated, very conceptual at this point in time, and we don't have a proposal, but as Mr. McDonald indicated, is this, essentially, this wipes the slate clean, and I think their attempt, and their effort here would be to say, what will the market support? What type of a development would be welcome in the city of Blue Springs for its best and highest use for this piece of property? And certainly, there would be development agreements that would hopefully spell out the types of conditions and restrictions or requirements that you and other members of the council would consider ultimately support or not. So there's a ton of work yet to be done on this particular request and application.
Okay. Councilman Lavesey?
I have a question for staff as well. What's the impact of not approving this vacation? What would that do to the project? What would be the impact overall?
Obviously, nobody's done any work on the project out there ever, other than one little, very small, very small corner, so I assume they just continue to sit there.
So the current concept plan would maintain and all of that, or is there an expiration? I thought there, Mr. Allen mentioned.
No.
Okay. So that whatever currently exists as the plan would be still in existence?
Yes, but it obviously is not developable in that manner.
Thank you. Councilman Fowler?
Does, does that mean that we can't hold back the vacation of this until we actually find out a little more details about what's being proposed?
I'm not sure what you mean by hold back, if you mean, do we have to pass it tonight? Obviously, you don't have to pass it.
Do we have the opportunity to pass it later?
I don't know. Depends on, if you didn't pass it now, I don't know if they'd bring it back. I don't know what they'd do.
Yeah, I think that would be the danger, unless we work with them in passing this, they might lose interest, and we lose the whole project, is I think what the danger is. And I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Murphy and his group, but right now, they, they are interested in getting it done, and in working with us to help develop what we think will work best for the community, and also fit their needs as well, and if we don't do it, I'm not sure if we'll hold their interest, and we'll have a vacant piece of property sitting there like it is now.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come and speak in support of? In support of? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to? Opposition to?
Your Honor, I do have some more comments.
Yes, Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, relative to, I guess, that parcel of land, I couldn't support the original concept plan. And the reasons were, going back to when the Parkway, actually, before it was there, when I helped approve the bonds for Adams Dairy Parkway, the vision that I hoped to accomplish, and I think the council at the time was, was to diversify our tax base. We invested millions of dollars into land acquisition, into actually building the road, supporting businesses, getting business like Haldex Coles, Durvet, Harmon Building out there, and so we could have some technology, manufacturing, and logistics jobs on the Parkway. And to me, the highest and best use of that land, since we've got millions invested in it, and now a city maintaining the lake, and a park over there, you know, I think the highest and best use is for businesses like you promised on the Missouri Innovation Park. Let's, let's have them go out there on the Parkway, on interstate frontage, and show them what a corporate business looks like out there. I would suggest that, you know, before we hand off this to a bunch of residential, I mean, I understand that people want to buy residential lots next to a city-maintained lake, I get it, but I think there has to be a high standard for that, and the high standard negotiated before was 420,000 square feet of retail. That doesn't sound like it's going to be delivered today. I think that we should hold the Parkway land for more than just residential, and I'd like to see it developed at higher use than, than a lot of residential out there. So for that reason, I don't see myself supporting this vacation until I hear more information about what's going to be brought to the table, and my goals are that we, we hold that land for some businesses like we want to attract. We keep saying Missouri Innovation Park, let's bring in those kind of businesses and have some land for them to develop on.
Any other comments? Before we close this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill 4280. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4280, an ordinance vacating Lake Ridge Village Lot 7 PUD final plan, a subdivision in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on first reading, proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Second reading of Bill Number 4280, an ordinance vacating Lake Ridge Village Lot 7 PUD final plan, a subdivision in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lavesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
No.
Councilman Culpepper?
No.
Councilman Corbell?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Carrie's giving an ordinance Number 4459.
Okay. Now, let me explain this next one. The next three items are connected. It's a public hearing and a couple of introduction of bills. So what we're going to do is, we're going to open the public hearing and ask that it be continued until the November 18th meeting. So we're going to open the public hearing, amending the redevelopment modification plan for Copper Leaf Village.
And Your Honor, I'll go ahead and read the exhibits for this particular public hearing, we'll get that on record. For a public hearing, RMP 10-13-4125, city would like to introduce an exhibit which includes City Council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, site location map, vicinity map, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, October 12, 2013, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses, the property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letters sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing.
Your Honor, motion that the public hearing be tabled till November the 18th.
About a request of the developer. Okay.
Second.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4282.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
4283.
Oh, 4283, yeah, and then go down 40.
All right. First reading of Bill Number 4283, an ordinance approving final plat for Brookwood Village, townhomes, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4283, an ordinance approving final plat for Brookwood Village Townhomes, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your motion?
Move the bill be approved on a second final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Corbell?
Aye.
Carrie unanimously giving an ordinance Number 4460.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4284.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4284, an ordinance approving amended final plat, the estates at Chapman Farms, first plat, a replat of the estates at Chapman Farms, first plat, lots 1 through 39, and tracks A through D, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4284, an ordinance approving amended final plat, the estates at Chapman Farms, first plat, a replat of the estates at Chapman Farms, first plat, lots 1 through 39, and tracks A through D, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Corbell?
Aye.
Councilman Lavesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carrie unanimously giving an ordinance Number 4461.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4285.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4285, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO, 19th plat, lots 1 through 15, and track H-2, city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading-
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4285, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO, 19th plat, lots 1 through 15, and track H-2, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edison?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Corbale?
Aye.
Councilman Levicic?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Kerry unanimously giving an ordinance number 4462.
Introduction and reading of Bill 4286.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Smooth it.
Yes, I'll wait for him to read it.
First reading of Bill Number 4286, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO, 20th plat, lots 16 through 27, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, uh, this is the last of three, uh, that we were talking about for the Parkway Estates, and, uh, just want to say that it's great to see some activity down there, uh, like, there's more activity on this agenda than we've seen in a long time. This also helps that NID to cash flow with some residences down there. The, the more residents, the more rooftops, the closer we get to, to a Walmart down there, and that's, that's an economic magnet for development, so, uh, and, and retail, so, uh, it's good to see the investment, and hopefully they'll be successful.
Any other comments?
I do have a comment. I have some concerns about reducing the size, because this is called an estate, and I want to see how this distinguished itself from lakeside and the villas and all those. But we're not asking the size of the lots, are we, are we reducing the size of the lots? We're not reducing the size of the lots, which still allows the opportunity to build it at upper size, this is just making the minimums, uh, with, with the lower threshold. And I would hope that, uh, the developer that's in the audience that will take that into mind, that there might be some people that want a larger size. Uh, one of the other things I would emphasize is I don't like cookie cutter type things for an estate, to where you drive in and everything looks just like. Just have some distinction when we do those kinds of things. Uh, and so, I'm, I'm appealing to, uh, those that's going to be doing those, that, because I know for a fact, I, I've lived in Blue Springs for 40 years, and, and I know that we've lost people because we did not offer them the opportunity for those sized homes, and they had to go to Lee Summit. And that just hurts my heart when I see that, someone has to go to Lee Summit, because we can't offer them what they're looking for in Blue Springs, so, anyway, those are my comments.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I was very concerned when I first saw this, because I didn't think we should be decreasing the size of the homes, but as I had the opportunity to sit down and, and speak with the developer, um, the size of the homes is, difference is minimal, and, um, what I have seen, and what was presented to me, was, um, a very, very nice subdivision. Um, while it's, it's still decreasing the square footage, it is minimum, and, as was explained, and has, we have seen in a lot of these subdivisions, the houses that go in are actually larger than what the minimum is. So, um, with that in mind, I am, I have decided I'm going to support this and trust that, that we will have a very, very nice development down there, and I'm anxious to see the activity.
Yeah, I, I think we all are, because occasionally, I like to just get out and drive the city, and I have driven into that estate a number of times, uh, looking and wondering what's going to eventually show up here, so, anyway. I applaud the interest in it, uh, certainly we look forward to seeing the first structure go up, and hopefully that'll be a magnet for having other people want to move there as well, so, anyway. Those, the only, any other comments? Councilman Carter?
Your Honor, I sat through the presentation of the planning commission, which was a lot more in-depth than what we've seen here, and I was very impressed with the number of floor designs and different plans that they have for these homes. Uh, I think any concern that it would be cookie cutter, um, is, is not founded.
Good.
Um, and that, uh, what was explained to us, that when people buy these homes, with the add-ons that they will, and the, you know, the options that they'll put into these homes, they'll be big, and they'll be estate-sized.
Good.
Yeah, we want to make sure when those executives move in the Innovation Park, they'll be able to spend their money on large homes.
There you go.
Very, okay, uh, we've had discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4286, an ordinance approving the final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO, 20th plat, lots 16 through 27, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Corbale?
Aye.
Councilman Levicic?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edison?
Aye.
Kerry unanimously giving an ordinance number 4463.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4287.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4287, an ordinance approving final plat for Wendy's Lot 1, remodel, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I tell you what, with this particular, I am intrigued with what I, what I see going on at that Wendy's. Uh, I'm, I'm interested in seeing the final product, to see what the house is going to turn out, uh, because, I mean, it was gutted, basically, and so we're doing a remake, and I guess I read someplace, I don't know where I read it, uh, if it was maybe in one of our many documents I see, that this particular model's going to be the first one in the Kansas City area of their remakes. And so, and that, that pleases me too, that we're first, so we, we're, we're just anxious to see it. Does anybody know when they're going to have it done?
The, the sign says mid-November.
Mid-November.
Which... Okay, those are the only comments I have. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4287, an ordinance approving the final plat for Wendy's Lot 1, remodel, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corbale?
Aye.
Councilman Levicic?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edison?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Kerry unanimously giving an ordinance number 4464.
Next, it brings us to Merrill announcements. Now, tomorrow's an election day, I understand rain is in the forecast, but hopefully that we, that we won't let that stop us from being patriotic and doing our duties to vote in this great country that we have that allows us that opportunity. There are two issues on the ballot, if you live in Blue Springs, number one is question one for Jackson County with your translational research medicine. And the other one is the question two is the Blue Springs Parks Initiative. Uh, that will be a three-legged stew. Number one, it will, uh, take care of some deferred maintenance, it will may take care of a community center that's much needed, and thirdly, it will help us develop some parkland that we have land-banked. So, we hope people will get out and vote tomorrow, and hopefully, despite whatever the weather might be, that they will feel that is a duty and a responsibility to get out and exercise that right to vote. The next thing is a week from today is November 11th, which is Veterans Day, so we certainly want to pay homage to our veterans, and just show our appreciation, if you know a veteran, to show your appreciation for their service, because if it were not for them, we would not be enjoying the freedoms that we enjoy today. Thirdly, I'd like to recognize in the audience with us today is our senator, our state senator, Will Kraus, and so, Will, we're happy to have you here with us tonight. Uh, this isn't his first visit here, and he comes and, uh, keeps informed on what's going on in his district, and I appreciate that, it means a lot. Uh, that brings us to Merrill, uh, that brings us to Thautse Panda. Oh, no, no, let me back up before we Thautse Panda. I mentioned last time about three teams that were undefeated. Now, we're down to two. The Blue Springs Wildcats are 10-0, and the Kansas City Chiefs are 9-0. And so, hopefully, when we have the next meeting, we will continue that tradition and that trend of announcing, uh, that both of these teams are, continue to have success, and, and we're very, very proud of the Blue Springs Wildcats, and hopefully they will repeat as state champions. And also, the Kansas City Chief will repeat something that happened when I was very young